The third issue is a very simple one, but it has great meaning and significance. And that's the recommendation that the county clerk's position should be an appointed position and not an elected position. The appointment would be made by the county executive, subject to the approval of the county legislature. The county clerk's position serves all three levels of government, the federal, the state, and the local government. The office operates under the state law in that he operates the land records. He also serves as the clerk of the Supreme Court and county court, yet he's paid in full by the county. So essentially, he's operating under regulations and delivering services that are mandated by all three levels of government. It is felt that this should be an appointment. There should be qualifications established for the position. And again, it should be appointed by the executive, subject to the approval of the county legislature. The fourth issue deals with the appointment process in the county. The current charter is not quite clear, and there's been confusion as to when someone is appointed to a commissioner or some other office. If they're not confirmed by the legislature, what is the status of that appointment? What is recommended is that the county executive would make the appointment, again, subject to the approval of the legislature, but the legislature would have 60 days to act on such an appointment. If the legislature does not act within that 60-day period, then that appointment is deemed to be completed and made. Again, the reason for that is to stop the confusion that has existed in the past, where there has been some question as to whether someone's appointment was valid or not. And the fifth issue, which is the last issue of our focus group, has to do with the charter commission itself. And what it recommends is that a charter commission should be either an ongoing or a every-ten-year event in the county, and that things change, and the structure of the government and various operations should be reviewed, and there should be a charter commission that at least is either standing or is appointed every 10 years and reviews the current charter. And that is the last and final one.
Thank you very much. Maybe the members of your committee that were here, your focus group, could just raise your hands if you participated in that, that particular report. Okay. Thank you. At this time, I do want to mention that there's a number of public officials that have come this evening, which is just terrific of them to take time from their busy schedules. I just want to introduce them very quickly. Assemblywoman Sandy Galif is here. Thank you. She's a former county legislator. We have Catherine Borgia, Judy Myers, Mr. Michael Smith, and legislator Shemsky. Thank you very much, all of you, for taking the time to be with us. Before we have the next report, for those of you that are not familiar with the Westchester County Code and Administrative Charter and Code, here it is. And if you ever have trouble sleeping at night, you could start on page one and work your way through. That's why this is such a complex task. Going through this legislation has been a real challenge. It's stimulating but challenging. And at this time, we'll have the next report from our Budget and Finance Group, and Chairman Jeff Binder will make that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, our focus group is the Budget and Finance Focus Group. And since November of 2011, we've been meeting pretty regularly internally and also with invited guests. You can find the list of invited guests that we had to come and help us work through these issues in our interim report. My vice chair of the focus group is Paul Meisner, who came in just a little while ago. The guiding principles of our focus group, in grappling with the charter provision that governs what today has become almost a $1.8 billion budget, are the following. What we wanted to do was we wanted to hear from people and find new ways to change, or ways to change the charter in a way that would enact the following principles, or give life to the following principles. We want a budget with greater public participation, increased transparency, and more thorough legislative oversight, while simultaneously providing for executive operational flexibility. So those were our aspirations, our goals. That's what's informing, that's what informed our research. And some of the issues that we have put forth in our interim report could be recommendations, but at this point, they're issues for discussion. And the first one was the issue of whether the budget approval timeframe was too compressed. And that had to do with some of the testimony that we heard from people who suggested that the way the present budget is released and the timeframe that the board has to deliberate on it amounts to only about five weeks. And in that time, there are holiday periods, and, you know, we thought perhaps this issue ought to be very closely scrutinized because of the size of the budget and the importance and impact it has on people's lives in Westchester. So a possible recommendation, if you look at our report, really goes hand in hand with issue two, which is the timing and the release of the county budget. We suggested perhaps we should look at changing the fiscal year to July 1st. And that may allow for better budgeting. It may allow for better data coming from the federal and state levels of government. Holiday tax proceeds might be a little better known at that point. And a July 1st fiscal year may provide or allow for a longer period of time for the executive and legislative branches to really craft perhaps a better budget. So changing the fiscal year to July 1st while also changing the timing of the release of the budget, they sort of go hand in hand. Perhaps we could, we looked at a possible timeframe for allowing the release of the budget. We didn't fill in the dates, and you'll see in our report, we left it blank because that's subject to further discussion. But the general principle here between issues one and two is more time, more oversight, more time for the public to really understand what's going on, and for the legislators to sink their teeth into the budget, and for there to be more of a deliberative process. Issue three had to do with a charter provision, and the charter, section 167 of the charter lays out the current budget process. So when we looked at that process, we looked at it from a point of view of our guiding principles. And issue three had to do with should the charter be clarified to ensure that the Board of Legislators has access to departmental funding requests. So the board, in prior budget seasons, has had some difficulty in getting, really trying to understand what is it that the departments need and want and need to function. And part of the oversight of the board, that function can't really be accomplished without data that supports what the departments want. Now, no one is suggesting that the board micromanage the administrative functions of these agencies, but in terms of budgeting, it's very helpful, and it has been brought to our attention that it's helpful to understand what the department and departments have asked to be their funding requests. So we suggested maybe the charter should be clarified to ensure that the board has access to those funding requests. Issue four, we discussed a possible, and this is a little bit more radical, a two-year budget cycle to possibly improve the county's fiscal health. And in our report, we go into some pros and cons of that. Issue five, there was a particular controversy not too long ago with regard to whether the board, or how the board participates in the capital budget process. And there's a particular section of the charter which specifies that by a date certain, the head of each department, institution, office, and agency of the county shall furnish to the budget director capital projects, detailed estimates of any capital projects, which the head of such department, institution, or office believes should be undertaken within the next several fiscal years. Now, the issue arose as to whether the Board of Legislators is considered an agency or a department for capital budget purposes. And there's ambiguity in the charter with respect to that, and we thought that that should be clarified to perhaps amend the charter so that for the capital budget purposes, the Board of Legislators is not considered a department, okay? And that would allow the board to put forth capital project initiatives as it sees fit. Now, the theory in that is, you know, the Board of Legislators is a policymaking body, right? And maybe it shouldn't be considered a department of county government for these purposes. So if the board wants to express a policy by initiating a project, it should be allowed to do that and not be subject to a narrow reading of the charter. Issue six, we suggested, and some of our members who have great private sector experience suggested, that the charter should require a more formalized budget monitoring process that includes like quarterly reports in a more formal way. Issue seven had to do with more, increasing public notice to the public when it intends to perhaps borrow for things like pension costs. And so the public ought to know if the county plans to borrow to pay for those increasing costs, which is becoming an increasing burden on all levels of government. And issue eight has to do with whether or not there should be a waiting or notice period for all legislators before voting on adds and deletes. And essentially, this has to do with how the present budget is proposed, how changes are made, how additions and deletions are made, and the time in which the county board has to understand the additions, understand the deletions, and how this $1.7 billion budget, or whatever portion, is being changed and modified. Legislators, we heard from more than one witness who came before us, who said there really ought to be more time to consider additions and deletions to this budget. And I think that's about it. If anybody else on our focus group wants to add anything, be happy to do so. But these can be found in our focus group report, and they're not exhausted, they're not, the list is not exhaustive, but we thought we got at some of the major points that people today are grappling with with respect to the budget.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. At this time, we'd like to ask David Menken, the first vice chair of the commission, to give us the report on the local government, county government work.
Thank you, Richard. I'm giving the report today. Our chair, Vinnie Restiano, wasn't able to make it today, but she's done a really great job of bringing us all together, and like every chair of every focus group and the chair of our commission, of finding consensus and helping us all work together. So I'm the first, I'm the vice chair of the Local Government, County Government Relationship Group. We met as a focus group 10 times. We interviewed people who we felt could provide valuable input. Among them were Drew Fixel, mayor of Tarrytown and president of the Westchester Municipal Officials Association, and John Pierpont, Pelham Manor Village Manager, and other people as well. The mission of our focus group is follows: to study the county's relationship with local municipalities for services as it relates to the charter, and to determine what kinds of improvements and efficiencies are appropriate; to review Westchester 2000 and Westchester 2025 as they pertain to towns and villages as a means of aiding in the improvements and efficiencies of services; to study issues pertaining to planning and assessment; to study sales tax issues; to determine the services that the county requires local governments to maintain; to review the shifting of the burden of non-collection of county taxes from the municipalities to the county; and to review areas of common ground to facilitate shared services. One of the problems which we face in this area is that it's not just that it takes two to come to the dance, the municipalities in the county, but that we have, what, 43, 45, 47 separate municipalities, all of whom should have a say and do have a say in our government. Anyway, we identified two problems in particular that we wanted to recommend revisions to the county charter. The first problem was that local government officials encountered difficulty communicating and dealing with county agencies. Our recommendation is a charter amendment to create a new position of intergovernmental relations liaison. This would be an appointment of the county executive and would have three functions: first, to act as ombudsman and facilitate communications between county personnel and municipal administrators and managers; second, to arbitrate or mediate to help resolve intermunicipal disputes; and third, to facilitate and encourage implementation of shared services in areas such as public safety, sanitary and storm sewers, and land use planning. The second problem, which we identified, which we felt we could recommend a solution for, was that despite various existing organizations, a more formal and regularized procedure would be appropriate to facilitate communication among elected county and local officials. So we are recommending a charter amendment to create a council of Westchester governments. The members would be the county executive, the chair of the Board of Legislators, and all of the elected mayors and supervisors. And the function of this group would be to facilitate intermunicipal cooperation and communication among elected officials who might not otherwise meet. When I was on the county planning board, the example that people would give is that when it rains in North Castle, it floods in Harrison. And this council of Westchester government perhaps would go away towards solving the problem of communication and cooperation among county and the local governments. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Can I just say one more thing?
Of course.
There was, I'm sorry, there was one issue which we did not tackle, because it had been tackled, or at least another group had tried to look at it, and that was the municipal guarantee of the county taxes, which we felt was just too big for our group and was hopefully covered elsewhere. Sorry. Thank you, David. We have a number of issues that overlapped in different focus groups, and we're going to, of course, sort all of that out, and nothing will be put under the carpet. We'll address all of the issues that have been raised. At this time, final report is from the Charter and Code Committee, and Jane Morganstern, a member of the committee, will make the presentation.
Yes. Our focus group consisted of a chair, a vice chair, and a member. I'm the member because unfortunately, the chair and the vice chair were unable to make it tonight. We met a number of times. We developed a mission statement, and I also should add that we had a great deal of help from counsel, staff counsel, Stacy Dolgin Metz and Chris Crane, in addition to having input from other members of the commission who were not members of our focus group. We met a number of times to develop issues, and as was noted earlier, a number of issues have overlapped that although our report has six issues that were identified, I would talk mostly about two of them, which haven't yet been discussed. One of them is the role of the county attorney. And in this context, our committee interviewed a number of individuals, Marty Rogowski, former county legislator, our current county attorney, Robert Meeam, former county executive Andy Spano, former county attorney Sam Yasker, former county attorney Charlene N. Delacato. I don't think I left anybody out. But in any event, the issue that arose was whether or not the county attorney, though required by the charter, represents both the executive and legislative branches of county government. There has been a history, especially recently, of the two branches asserting conflicting positions on charter and code interpretation or other matters of law, so that when questions of law arise, sometimes the Board of Legislators may be required to hire outside counsel to represent the board against the position of the executive branch. All of the people to whom we spoke had particular opinions on this. I'm not going to go through each of them, but suffice it to say that our recommendation was to bring to the full commission for discussion possibly changing the applicable provisions of the county charter and code to provide for separate attorneys for the county board in addition to the position of county attorney, who would still represent Westchester County. We haven't made a recommendation on whether that should be implemented, simply to bring it forward for discussion by the full commission. Another issue was whether or not a, excuse me, a parks district should be established, whether or not establishment of a discrete parks district would be a more effective way of delivering more for less. This was proposed by former Commissioner of Parks and Recreation Joe Stout, who was strongly in favor of creating a parks district because it was his belief and the belief of certain others that if the parks were separated from the general fund, it would be more likely to bring in money from donors to the friends of the parks and would be able to establish, I'm sorry, to get more private grants and donations because people would feel more secure knowing that their money was going to parks, conservation, and recreation rather than possibly being spread out into the general fund. Subsumed within this discussion was also a discussion of rye playland, although there's currently a disagreement between the county executive and the county board as to which branch of government has the authority to determine the future of playland. And part of this discussion, of course, which I think people are most familiar with, is whether or not the ownership and operation of an amusement park is or should be a county function. So that we are recommending to bring to the full commission for discussion the issue of whether creating a parks district should be further explored, and whether the Playland Commission, which is provided for in the charter but actually has not met, as far as we can tell, whether it should be reconstituted. We also discussed confirmation of appointees, but that was already covered by Al-Ghada, property tax rates, establishment of a permanent charter revision commission, and reviewing the structure of county government. But I think the ones that I elaborated on a little more have not, or those that have not been discussed already by former groups.
Okay. Thank you, Jane. At this time, I would like to open the floor to the public this evening. We have two cards so far. Obviously, we want to hear from you, and if there's anyone here who hasn't filled out a card, we'll certainly give you that opportunity to speak shortly thereafter. The first speaker is Anthony Foutia. He's a retired resident of North Castle, North White Plains area, and if you'd be kind enough to come up to the podium, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Honorable Board. Glad that you provided this opportunity to speak tonight. As on my card, I'm a lifelong resident of Westchester County in the town of North Castle. I'm a 45-year municipal employee, retired. Fellow resident here, Herman Geist, I've known for quite a while. Kind of wish we had the old days of the county board of supervisors instead of what we have now. But I'm also the founding director of We the People of New York Incorporated. The main office is in Queensbury, New York, which is right next to Lake George. We watch what government does. We watch what you people do, from the towns and villages up to the governor. And then if we disagree with some issues, we go to court. And the problem that I've had over the years is the lack of education. Not that people aren't smart, they're very smart, but the oath of office. When I see all these years that I worked for the government and see people take the oath of office, it's only ceremonial. They don't have a clue what the constitution of the state or the federal constitution limits them to do, because they contradict it all the time, they violate it all the time. And it's a lack of education, and it's because we don't, and I see some people here tonight that can do something about it. 801 of New York state law requires mandates that from eighth grade on, they're taught the state, the federal constitution, the bill of rights, intensive training, not just a little bit. And the school districts can lose their state aid if they don't do this. But it's been lost, even the superintendents of schools, the teachers, they're not even aware that that's a law. And if you don't know the law, you don't have any rights. You don't know what your rights are, you don't have any rights. So just a little bit of background, and I'll try to be quick. We just recently, last month, served papers to all the state officials on a constitutional convention. Every 20 years, this is important, just like the constitution. This is our county charter. It limits government. It's written in such a way that we, the people, kind of control what goes on, and you're our representatives. I don't think a lot of people understand that. They look to government for all the answers. But this constitutional convention, we just served all the papers last month, and when we served them in Albany, the attorneys up there told us that this was the first class-action lawsuit against the state of New York. So that's a first for our organization. And every 20 years, we get to put that up on the ballot, constitutional convention, and have delegates, appoint delegates. What we're doing is pointing out conflicts of interest for delegates to that convention. We want the courts to say who is eligible and who's not eligible to be on that court. There's a tremendous amount of conflicts of interest. There's a tremendous amount of conflicts of interest. Politicians shouldn't be on there, shouldn't be candidates to that because they can't be writing their own laws. It's got to be from the people. And so we're into those kinds of things. And I disagree with, I mentioned there tonight about borrowing for pension cost. We've reviewed that, and nowhere in the Constitution we see that's allowed. And, you know, lawyers always figure out ways to get around it, and they do. No public funds for private purpose. They get around that all the time, too. And so we're going to look at that. That probably is best addressed at the Constitutional Convention where we can do some changes and strengthen up those kinds of issues. So let me just get on to, I found out about this meeting when I was having breakfast in a dully this morning. I happened to be reading the papers, so I just threw a few things together. And one of the things was, that was very interesting, and I don't know if he's here today, but Pace University Professor Gregory Holtz, I don't know if he's here, but his statement, as I sat having breakfast, was right on the money. And what he said, "Any charter revision can be viewed either as a honest effort to make government more efficient and effective or a political power play." And I think the residents of Westchester County have to be aware of that. This is a very dangerous thing if the people don't watch what you guys are proposing here. What can happen? Well, if you don't know your rights, what can happen? The charter revision has certain limits on government, like if they spend over $10 million, it has to go to a referendum so the people can vote on that whether it should be or not. The problem is that our elected officials find ways to get around that. We have to tighten that stuff up. How do they get around it? They build a brand-new golf course. They break that, to avoid that $10 million limit to go to you for permission, they separate it. They have the clubhouse so much, the fairway so much, the green so much. It totals way over $10 million, and it should go to a referendum. And that should be challenged, and that's the kind of things that we will challenge if that's done in the future. Tobacco bonds, another thing, a lot of that money was used for salaries for politicians and used a lot of ways it shouldn't have been used, to keep the tax rate low, a zero increase for a couple of years. We challenged that, and I was down in Brooklyn at court. There's about 10 town attorneys down there along with that. But it's important.
If you could just finish up, we'd appreciate it.
I will. I went to that. I just put notes together because I didn't have much time to prepare here. Sorry.
Again, if you'd like to, over the next days and weeks, we'll certainly take any written comments you have, give you more time.
I will, because I went online and pulled up a little bit of it, but I haven't read the minutes. A lot of it's not available. There's a lot of stuff that has to be looked at
Sure.
in a short period of time. I consider three months a short period of time. And I'm really concerned that really the people that are telling us how to run the government are the government themselves, who have a special interest in what they want. And it's not always in the best interest of me or the public. A lot of times, it's not in the best interest.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time.
I'd just like to just read one thing here. I put this together. Action Charter Revision. Okay. Goes to the very heart and meaning of self-government and the phrase found in the Declaration of Independence, 1776, which declaration was incorporated in its entirety in the New York's first constitution. That was in 1977. To wit, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that, to secure these rights," this is important, "governments are formed among men, depriving their just powers from the consent of the government." You get your powers from us. I want you to remember that. In October of 1932, former President Calvin Coolidge and Alfred E. Smith, Governor of New York State, nominee for president in 1928, issued a joint statement of concern for America. It said, "Unless the people, through a united action, arise and take charge of their government, they will find that their government has taken charge of them. Independence and liberty will be gone, and the general public will find itself in a condition of servitude to an aggregation of organized and selfish ambitions." That was true then, and it's true now.
All right, sir. Time is up. We'll take that in writing from you. We'd be happy to take it and make it part of the record.
Okay, I will review in the next three months, and you'll probably be hearing from me again.
Our pleasure. Thank you very much for taking the time. At this time, we'd like to call on Mr. Jerry Fiella. Mr. Fiella is the Executive Director of the New York State City-City Management Association. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Wishney. Good evening, Mr. Wishney and members of the County Charter Revision Commission. My name is Jerry Fiella. I am currently serving as the Executive Director of the New York State City-City Management Association. We are an organization of appointed, nonpartisan local government administrators and managers across New York State. To learn more about us, you can visit our website, www.nycma.govoffice.com. And tonight, I am speaking on behalf of the association. First, we'd like to commend the leadership of the county for convening this commission and charging it with the assignment to perform a self-evaluation of county governance, local county government relations, taking a hard look at its budget and finance process, and most of all, an examination of its organizational framework as specified in the county charter. We applaud the commission for their dedication and time serving in this capacity, but for tonight, I'll limit my comments on the focus group report dealing with the executive-legislative relationships. We, as an organization, were extremely pleased to read the focus group report, include a recommendation to modify the county's government structure suggesting that the county executive, still elected at large by the entire county, serve as the chairman or the chairperson of the Board of Legislators, retaining the title as chief executive officer for the county, and that the entire Board of Legislators confirm the appointment of a nonpartisan professional county manager-administrator to serve as the chief operating officer for the county. This form of government, or one that closely resembles it, currently exists in over 50% of the local jurisdictions in Westchester County today, in 23 counties statewide, and in numerous towns and villages and cities throughout the nation. Change, for the sake of change, is not always productive, but the focus group, taking into account what has happened in the past with an expectation for an anticipated outcome, serves as a good rationale for making the change today. The current charter has been in existence since 1937, albeit with many modifications over the years, but none too dramatic to modify its initial intent that set the foundation for how the county is governed. Much has changed since 1937, and the time may be ripe for significant change in how Westchester County government functions and is structured. Creating a government structure whereby the elected officials collectively function as the legislature, making policy, and then directing the chief operating officer with the mandate to administer the policy is clear, straightforward, transparent, and efficient. Legislators would have access to administrative staff for data and input during the policymaking process, understand implementation strategies and costs, and be able to debate the policy in the proper arena. Once policy is adopted, it becomes the chief operating officer's responsibility to follow through with implementation without political consideration. Again, straightforward, transparent, and efficient. The county manager-administrator holds the department heads accountable for their work product. The county board holds the manager-administeror accountable, and the elected officials are held accountable by the electorate. Not only is there greater accountability, but government develops a sense of continuity, depth, and institutional knowledge. Ultimately, power rests with the elected county board of legislators led by the county executive. Briefly, with respect to the budget process, the chief operating officer's role should be to provide the Board of Legislators with a budget document and access to a process that begins at the departmental level, with department heads developing their budgetary needs based on the goals and priorities established by the boards of legislature. The process should be uniform, traceable, and, most important, transparent. Given Westchester County's demographic profile, finding a highly qualified candidate to professionally lead the administrative side of the county government will be an easy task. However, that's not the task at hand tonight. Tonight, the task is for the entire Charter Revision Commission to support this recommendation and present it to the county board of legislators and county executive for review. Therefore, at this juncture, we respectfully urge the commission to accept the focus group report recommending the changes in the executive-legislative branch as I just outlined above. Again, thank you for your time and comment, for your time and consideration of this comment.
Thank you, Mr. Fiella. At this time, we're going to have our next speaker, the Honorable Sandy Galiff, New York State Assemblywoman, and a former county legislator.
And a former county legislator for 13 years, so a lot of this brings back wonderful memories. And if I'm out of date, because I haven't been there for a while, Catherine Borse has been there since, and Richard Wishney, and who was before you, Richard, from Chappaqua?
Oh, Hospital Board.
Right. Mark Tullis.
Mark Tullis.
Okay. So if I say something that's wrong, it's just because I've not been there for a while. But I think this is wonderful, by the way, to have this commission. And one of the things that you reported on was whether, you know, how often should we do that? I think this gets a little bit to your issue, too. I think it should be just, like, every 10 years, at least, just do it. So that it's not structured because something is happening wrong or right. It's just, you know, a normal review. Now, you heard New York State has 20 years, and the public turned it down. I'm not recommending that you ask the public whether you do it or not because all the interest groups probably will turn it down. And I'm a good government person, but it doesn't seem to work that well. So I think a natural view, every 10 years, and not to have political people on the charter. Obvious, I don't know whether it says now you could put a county legislator on the charter commission, no. So be sure that that's, you know, that's left out. So it's not the elected officials that are on it. But I do agree. I just want to comment on a couple of things. When you were talking about reassessment, and I'm sorry, I just came in a little, just as you were talking about it. I'm the real property check chair in Albany, and Westchester County and Suffolk County are the worst counties for being reassessed. We are, you know, in such a negative position. So I'm a believer in we should be reassessing the whole county, but maybe the option is, what you said, is that if you allow people to opt into the county, doing it for them, would the county pay for it? Because that would be somewhat on the whole issue of the police, that the county pays for it. And you may get, you know, a lot of people doing it. I mean, there are some communities now that may be going forward, but, you know, that may be a way to garner more interest in it if they were covered with their costs by the county. The other is the county executive making an appointment. I don't know whether you considered, I was thinking about when I was there, and sometimes it took a lot of time and effort, really, to actually review the candidates and to get the background of the candidates. And there was one time, I know, we turned somebody down because they had absolutely lied on their resume, but it took us a little while. So I don't know whether we can, you can do that in 60 days or 90 days or whatever, but, you know, you know the government has to continue, you have to have commissioners. There might be a little bit of a leeway in there. When you were talking about a budget in July, I like that. First of all, when I was in the county board, we were doing the budget during Thanksgiving and Christmas and Hanukkah and everything, and, you know, the public just was engaged in a lot of other things. So, and we always said, "We don't know what the state is giving us. We're asking for hotel tax. We don't know whether we're getting it." You know, all those iffy kinds of things that we were having to put in our budget. And I remember one year with Alda Bella, we just wouldn't let him do the hotel tax because we didn't know whether we had it. So we had to take out a whole bunch of money. So anyway, I think doing it later on, you know, I don't know about the federal government, but at least with the state, we seem to be on a better track right now with April 1st. We'll hope to continue that. So I think that would be good. Could you lop in the community college at the same time? Because remember, the community college is a separate vote in the fall. Would seem to me that you could do it then. Right now, we just added, I think it was $150 for the full-time equivalent from the state, so you would know what the state component was for the community college, it would seem like. Then you wouldn't have to have two separate votes. Joe Hankin might not like it, but I think it, you know, pulls it all together, that this is part of the county budget. Quarterly reports are, you know, or reports are absolutely imperative for the board to know how things are going. You know, if you're talking about daycare and subsidies, which has been a hot issue, how do we know how many people are being served or not served? But if you have a continual analysis of it, then the public knows, and the board knows. And having information is really key to better budgeting, so I agree with that. I think the budget director has to report to the county board as a part of that report, so that would be covered with the press. Now, they're probably there doing it now, but it should be in the charter to be sure that it happens. On the issue of non-collection of taxes and having AAA rating for the county, it was always wonderful, the county to have AAA rating. But look what's happening to our localities. I mean, we're the only county in the state, I don't know how it ever happened to have this way we collect taxes, but again, we're the only one that does it this way. It would seem to me there has to be some, maybe, you know, still the locals collect, but there's got to be some sharing so that the locals aren't left holding the bag on properties that are not paying their taxes. So, you know, if that can be worked out. And just my last comment is the attorney. And I just remember how many times we always thought that the county attorney was hired by the county executive, which is true. So how can they, how can we be their second boss? We can't. And there were so many times where the county executive, you know, would have one opinion, we would have another, I don't know, I'm trying to remember, airports, sewers, whatever it was. And we just, you know, there were times when we had to hire people because we just felt that the county attorney, whoever it was, was employed by the county executive. So, you know, I like that plan in there to have it as a specific. So those are my comments. I will try to comment more as I hear more. I'm learning about what you're doing, and I think it's really great, so keep up the task.
Thank you, Mrs. Galiff. At this time, is there anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments? Okay. We know this is not a sexy subject, and, but we're glad you're here. Certainly want to recognize Legislative Williams, who came in a little bit ago, and particularly pleased to see the legislators here. We're working for you, and we hope to give you a thorough and professional report at the end of the process. Yes, Mr. Zuckerman?
Could I make a statement, Richard?
Sure. You're not going to ask for a raise, are you?
How much you get when you multiply zero? Now, I just wanted to say, the chairman alluded at the beginning to the fact that we were nonpartisan, and there were some comments earlier from our first speaker about some issue with political process. I've been on this commission and attended virtually every meeting and every subcommittee meeting, and I just want to say for the record, number one, the chairman has done an admirable job, a fantastic job. And secondly, the, it wasn't stated earlier, but the makeup of this commission is that every county legislator had one appointment, and the county executive had six appointments. So this is a commission that's made up of many Republicans and many Democrats, and in all of the meetings that I've attended, I have never heard one item of partisanship about any of this process. And that is, to reiterate what the chairman said at the beginning, this has been a totally nonpartisan, nonpolitical process where every member, as I've seen it, has submitted his or her best recommendations and given the best thoughts for the betterment of the county and not any political entity or person. I just wanted to say that for the record, Richard.
Okay, if there's no other If there's no other representatives of the public who want to say anything, we're going to close the hearing. I just want to mention that due to the vote of the Board of Acquisition and Contract at the county, we are being given resources that we greatly appreciate, that will give us the ability to streamline the work. We are going to have the services of Professor Jerry Benjamin. What's the organization, Les?
He's Professor at New Falls, and I can't remember the name of the organization, but he's got the experience of visual and state and county and local government.
Right. And also, we have the services of Mr. Lester Steiman, who will continue his work through the end of the process. So, we're very pleased with that. I do want to announce to my fellow board members that it looks like April 27th will be a day for our retreat. It'll be held at the Westchester Community College. Joe Hankin is still our friend, Sandy, so he's gonna sponsor the event. We're very pleased about that. And it'll give us a day to take in the comments from the public, to begin the process of trying to get through all of these very complex issues. And we may, in fact, have another retreat probably after the summer, because our plan is to have our work done at the end of September, so that we can begin actually writing the final report that we want to give to you on December 15th. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to follow up a little bit on the budget and finance focus. We're very fortunate enough to have Judy Myers here, who's chair of the Board's Budget Committee, and I was hoping maybe you could give us your initial thoughts. We tried to get you before our group, but that was during the height of the budget season, but is it possible to hear a little bit from you today? That would be probably very constructive for us. Not to put you on the spot, though.
Too late for that.
I'm always on the spot. No, I, this was, first of all, I would say, boy, this was fantastic. You have all done an enormous benefit to the residents of Westchester County, whatever way this goes and however, I mean, just the fact that you've done this, and that I think this was, I wish he was here tonight, Bill Ryan, although I am sure that he will watch the tape, because this was always his baby, this idea that we just had to review this tome that you see in front of you, that can also be used, actually, it's very good for developing upper body strength, also when you can't sleep at night. It is very, very difficult to, and I have been budget chair now for a little over a year, it's very, very difficult to handle this massive budget between the time it's presented in November, and then trying to meet the dates that are specified in the charter, and keep in mind that you're gonna lose people because of holidays. It's very difficult. It's difficult to get to talk to all of the different department heads and the commissioners. It's difficult to really feel that you've done what you were appointed or elected or in a position to do. You don't come away from it feeling like, wow, I know this budget inside and out. And having been on a town board, and I know several of you have been elected officials or served in other capacities like that, I think when you have more time, you really do feel that you have given everything your due diligence, and it's just not possible when you've got this short period of time. I know that there were campaign promises made by, oh, for years and years, that, oh, yeah, we'll get it done before November 15th. But it's always very conveniently placed right behind the election so that it doesn't become an election issue. But I totally agree and think it would be fantastic to change the fiscal year, to be able to utilize what we know from the state, to be able to build that into the budget. And I even think community college wouldn't mind. I mean, we vote on their budget now in August, so it wouldn't, I don't think they'd mind too much. And you can talk Joe Hankin into it. Did you have any other questions for me?
Appreciate your
Really good work.
Okay. And there's gonna be more time for legislators to review our work and give us input, and we're really looking forward to that. Mr. Future?
Are we gonna be notified of any future convening news or anything open to the public?
Sure.
In a better way?
Sure.
A little bit more, we
Yeah. I do want to point that, and Melanie, maybe you can help me, what is the website that all of our meetings are on? All right.
You go to westchesterlegislators.com. On the left side, there's a menu, and there's a link, it's the Charter Revision Committee, and that'll take you to the separate page of all of our meetings, the video, the minutes that are available, all focus group minutes.
So, it's all there for you?
Something for the general public, too.
Yeah. Anybody can go online and look at all of our meetings. Everything is taped, as was the meeting this evening. Yes, legislator?
To that point, a number of legislators I know did send out e-blasts to their email lists, and that is something that we can probably double down on as an institution and make sure that that gets out.
We appreciate that. Great. Is there anybody from the press here this evening? Okay. We're gonna continue to, someone was here and left?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry.
Janet Segoria, I chair the
Why don't you use the mic?
Janet Segoria, I chair the County Government Committee for the League of Women Voters of Westchester. And as you know, the league has its arcane methods, and we do not say anything without passing it, getting agreement from our board, which meets tomorrow, actually. I imagine we will want to say something about the budget, timing of the budget, on which we have spoken for years and years and years, and probably about reassessment, on which we have just had a forum, which I mentioned to you, Mr. Wishney.
Yes.
Which went very well with a state representative, a county representative, two or three working assessors, municipal assessors, and the Yonkers and Greenberg representatives, who are, they're just starting a reassessment. And I can tell you that as far as state funding is concerned, we understand from the real property person, John Wolam, that that has to go through the legislature, if there were to be any state funding. Although, as you know, they do give $5 a parcel for reassessment now. And we understand from the county representative that there is very little money available, but they have funded certain field site and aerial photography. My only question is, I will send you, as I said, a statement which we've prepared about reassessment, which gives a little history of it in the state and the county, and the results of a survey, which we just completed, of all of the 40-odd municipalities. And I just want, as well as a tape, a DVD of the forum. I just want to know where we should send it.
Melanie?
Or
You'll receive the documentation?
And I, okay, at the municipal building. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? With that, thank you all very much for coming. This meeting is now adjourned.